Today is December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order, three o'clock. Can you please do the roll call?
It's Craig Borba.
Present.
Harry Courtwright is absent, David Kelly.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Here.
Kathy Wormick is not here at this time. Unsure if she's coming.
Posting of the agenda.
The agenda is posted on before December twelfth.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I have some questions about the minutes.
You sure can.
Um, the most substantial question I have was regarding, item ten E on page three, the library annual report. Because we spent some time discussing the numbers. And one of the reasons why I said that it was important to discuss the numbers was so that we had some basis to discuss programming and other issues. And I don't know, maybe that was when papers were being shuffled or something like that, but, on the tape, but, maybe a suggested remedy to that instead would be, and I don't know if this has ever been done in the past, that the library director actually prepare a report comparing, you know, the numbers from this year's annual report to the prior year and putting some narrative behind them. Because essentially, that's what I was doing in my questioning last time.
Actually, the, um, my narrative is the first part of the annual report, so.
So the best thing to do would be to refer to that?
I would, I would ask that you do that. We, we have the annual reports as part of the record every year. And so you can go back and, and look at the annual reports, and they're on our website, and.
Because that's actually where I was getting my comparative numbers from, was going, I actually had a copy of last year's annual report when I was asking those questions, which I was hoping to see in the minutes.
Well, one thing that I do want to say about the minutes is that we're spending hours and hours and hours compiling the minutes, and they're not necessary because we have recordings of them, of the meetings. And technically, our minutes should say, "Report was given, no action taken," or "No action was taken." And the minutes don't, don't need to reflect the entire dialogue of the meeting because we have, we have recordings of them. And so I, it's becoming a real burden on us, honestly, to do these minutes in this fashion, to make them so extensive. I'm, I'm just being truthful that we're.
Well, you know, and I appreciate that because I, you know, they.
Listening to it over and over again.
Yeah, because I, I know when I first joined the Board of Trustees, I think it probably was traditional that, or maybe in the past, because I was, I certainly made an effort, a statement at least, to ask for more information in the minutes. And then the minutes, I think, reflected that sense. One of the things that I kind of like in this minute, in the minutes, and the way that they're done now is that when I review them, for example, in the trust fund financial discussion on page two, I believe, there's a report by Director Wormick, or motion, I think, to actually look, actually agendize in April, a discussion of the foundation note. And honestly, to rewind the tape or to go back to my fuzzy notes on these things would be, would be difficult for me to kind of remember that I need to put in my calendar that April's a date that we should, or maybe even in March, that we should actually make sure that it does get agendized.
She's asking me to do that. So, so when she asks me to do that, I make a note, and then I take care of that as the person who helps, who prepares the agenda. So, so when she says, can you please, you know, make sure that it's in April, that's, we make a note, and then we'll put that on the April agenda, and you, you won't have to necessarily worry about that. Also, if I didn't discuss it at the board meeting, it shouldn't be in the minutes. So if I, if I didn't give, if I didn't say, "The door count changed by twenty percent," or whatever, it wouldn't be reflected in these minutes because it didn't happen.
Well, I wouldn't ask you to put anything in the minutes that didn't happen. My discussion would really have started with something that did happen, and it's not reflected in the minutes. But I do, I do appreciate what you're saying in terms of that, you know, at some point, the body makes a decision as to how detailed the minutes have to be. And I suppose maybe that's something that we should, you know, maybe put to a vote or something. I don't know. I don't know if that's appropriate. But, but I do appreciate, I am certainly the first person to appreciate the detail, like I said, that when I see that, it makes me responsible. And it makes me more helpful to you, I think, too, to make sure that these things get taken care of along the line.
So, David, excuse me, I, I think I heard two things here, and I want to make sure I understood. The first one, the original question was the comparison of year-over-year statistics. Is that correct?
Yeah, because we did have a discussion about that, and, you know, and I don't believe it was said at the time that the, the, what was actually discussed was already written up in the annual report. Because at that time, I probably would have deferred to it at that point. But, so, you know, I moved a little caught off guard there, but.
Because I haven't calculated the year-over-year changes, so I know we wouldn't have discussed it if I hadn't calculated that.
But you did month, you, you did month, you, you've always had this in our packet. You compare November of this year to November.
Oh, I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about me having the annual report in my hand, and I had the prior year's annual report in my hand, and I started asking questions about those two numbers.
Right, and that's what, and that's why I'm going to ask is, this report I assume you just do because it's a report you have to do, right? Is it not for us? It's just one you do already?
We, we provide it to you, but we keep those numbers so that at the end of the year, we can provide this to the State Library.
Correct.
They require it, and then we take the, this and turn it into this of the.
Would, would I be safe in assuming that somewhere in this spreadsheet you might have where we were year-to-date November twenty eighteen versus year-to-date November twenty nineteen?
No.
So you just do that at the end of the year?
They manually add up all the twelve months. They go back and look at each one of these statistics, and they create the annual count of all the things, and pages and pages, and Julie just cringes about it because it's so much, so many questions that they ask us for the state. And the State Library statistics are all online on the state's website, so.
Do they show year-to-date versus year-to-date, or they do?
No, they just show library versus library. So you could go look at us compared to other libraries
I got you.
of that particular year. So no, it was something, it would be something we would have to create and, and go back and pull our annual reports and our annual statistics, and then create a spread, a document, a spreadsheet, and, and do calculate percentages and all that.
Give us the history as to what this is in here and why it's, we've always done this. I've always, it's always, since I've been here.
It's always been there. I think it's just curiosity.
A previous trustee had asked for some statistics. And so, because we were doing it already, then we started including it in the packet. But it was only, yeah, only by that request because they wanted to know kind of some of the information. So we, at that time, went through and kind of highlighted what they wanted to know, and then we pulled it out of our bigger monthly report that we compile.
So there are a lot more statistics, honestly, that, that we have, but we, it's not really, you wouldn't care, honestly, about some of the statistics, about whether someone's a snowbird or not a snowbird.
I guess maybe I should, maybe I put this the wrong way. I'm just wondering if there is, instead of David sitting there and doing a manual calculation using his copy of this report and last year's report, do you guys have that somewhere? Will you show year-over-year?
No, I'd have to create it.
That's why I thought it would be useful to just have them in the minutes, because it was already in the discussion, and then we'll just move on to something else.
But I did, but if I didn't do the calculations, what would I have just, I don't know what we discussed.
We would have just looked at the numbers and saying, for example, we know that computer use has gone down because of the fact that people are using their cell phones. Those kinds of discussions.
I mean.
Right, and that's, it.
This is what I guess you did, right?
I think that's what I did. I think I looked at it and said, "This one's down because we think anecdotally that people have mobiles."
It's up.
Phones and laptops, but I didn't run a, I didn't run statistics or calculate percentages or anything.
That's what you were doing, right?
No, I was just doing exactly what you were doing. I said, "Look, I see this number is down. I see this number is up. Can we, can we supply an anecdote about it?" And I thought those anecdotes were helpful, so that's, I was hoping to see that in the minutes, that's all. Because honestly, there are some things that, you know, for example, the library, the, the computer usage being down isn't mentioned in the annual report. So, and I probably, if there were some other, I mean, it's, it's, it's an annual report. It's supposed to be reflective of some of the accomplishments. It doesn't really go through some of the challenges, really, I don't think, for the library. And I think, and I know there must be challenges for the library going forward that are reflected in numbers.
So, David, would you see statistics at a glance for seventeen eighteen and then eighteen nineteen alongside of it? And an explanation of where there's some deviation?
No, you know what, honestly, I, I was doing that by hand. So all I wanted was to see a record of what we discussed by hand. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to create work for you guys. It's unnecessary. Especially since you're saying that probably that a good portion of that is already in the annual report, and I'll just go back to the annual report to look for some of that correlation, but, I mean, the other option you're leading me with is to go ahead and do it again myself, and then just submitting a list of questions about the numbers and hoping for some anecdotes to come out from that.
This information would probably help us with future planning and programming, seeing where we need to put dollars and space into, if there's such a drastic drop, say for computer usage, that maybe we don't emphasize that in the, the new structure.
Is there an action we want to make there, David, or is this, you'd just like to have this reported as a comment?
Well, I, I've laid a couple of options on the table. One was, the minutes get amended if it's possible because of the recording is available. If that's not available, then obviously, the more drastic option would be to request a submitted, a more detailed report going line item by line item. The other, the other suggestion I had was to let me just go back and look at the annual reports and see if, you know, make some comments myself, looking at the numbers, going back and forth, and then submitting a list of questions, which I'd be happy to do. So, I think that probably the most likely scenario is either amending the minutes or me submitting a report, so whichever is.
Well, it sounds like this may have been lost to the not being able, the audible quality of the recorder anyway, so you wouldn't be able to recreate, if you don't think.
I don't know about that, but I think it's, I, I think it's just that we get to.
It was skipped because I didn't think there was any action taken, so I just put that. That was the only action that I know of, so I just kept it brief. So we probably could go back if we needed to, if we needed in the report or in the minutes.
If you want it that way, we can do it. I'm just, I'm just asking you all to consider letting us go back to brief minutes because it's taking us hours. Six hours, maybe, to do these?
I think, I think in some, in some instances, if, if some of these were briefer, but, you know, I think, you know, this, what the whole discussion about the treasurer's report, I think, was so important. There had been times when we were discussing the building committee, you know, the comments from the public and our interaction with them about certain topics that had to do with the library that I think required a level of detail. You know, I, I suppose, you know, there might be something that we discussed that doesn't require a whole lot of detail. I don't know. I, I can't think of something off the top of my head that really hasn't been kind of.
I will counter that, though. The city council meetings, when, I mean, if you think about the level of importance in the city council, minutes are motion by this person, seconded by this person, vote, action was approved. That's it on their minutes, and that's the standard for.
But they're also, sorry, are you finished? I didn't want to interrupt you. But they are also a body that people like us report up to. So, we're deliberative. So we actually sit there and set a lot of what the discussion that they might be thinking about in motion. So by the time it gets up to them, they have a record of saying, "How was this discussed on the public level?" So I think our minutes have to be a little bit more detailed because we're closer to the public record as opposed to at that level.
I would counter that we are recording it.
May I suggest, it's, it's, it's time for us to have our annual meeting anyway, by January. Why don't we put down on the agenda just a general review of our practices as a board, and some, I mean, for example, I mean, if, if you're producing something that no one is using anymore, why, why have you guys do that? So maybe it's, it's the right time for us as a group to look at things and maybe go through and say, when it comes to the minutes, the following sections don't require any further than, was it approved and how it was voted on, and then these types of reports. For example, the committee reports could be written up by the committee chairs and provided to you guys to be included in the minutes versus you sitting here trying to capture them from a recording. But there could be some, we could always say that, you know, staff reports, when it comes to certain things, might require a little more detail just to record. That make sense?
Sure.
The other thing, too, is I'd be interested, and I haven't asked either of our two council members who are responsible for us on the, on the city council, whether or not they're, they take interest in our minutes as well, and what, what they, they feel is, you know, do they like the level of detail? I'd be interested in knowing that, too.
As an, as an addition to that, is that the minutes do not have to be approved. They just have to ask if there are corrections, and then they're to be just, they're just to, the minutes were received. And that's something that has gone back and forth that you all have requested that you, or I think that you voted on it, and according to, is it the Brown Act, I think, or the Roberts, Roberts Rules of Order? That they just, the minutes just have to be received, and.
We go by Rosenberg.
Well, either one.
Well, I think most of the times I've raised issues about the minutes is because I've sought corrections to them.
Right, so I know that, yes, that's a very good thing that we, we could talk about.
Let's visit this and identify and give staff direction on the, when, because I do think it's important that we record these things. I know it's, it's a lot of work, but maybe we're recording things we don't necessarily need to record, and there are things that we're overlooking. I don't know. And just have a discussion around what those things are. And it could be that the, you know, the next staff assignment, whoever is that committee chair submits a paragraph in writing, if we want to include that in the minutes, and you guys just bolt it in there without you having to create something that's, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Right, at our Friends meeting, the treasurer, treasurer's report is a typed document that just gets cut and pasted into the minutes.
Well, the foundation is almost the same thing. I mean, Terry Dean, who does the minutes, she'll send it over to me and say, "Okay, this is what I think you said. Can you look at this, and can you update it?" And I end up filling it out for her and sending it back to her. So it can be a group effort as well, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I think right now I'm writing a memo.
So how are we handling the November minutes?
Well, wait a minute. David's asking, should he write a memo asking for, basically, you're going to ask questions about some of the comparisons and ask staff to respond?
Right, it's, I'll just do my own analysis of the numbers and then.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, wait a minute. So that, that's, that's the change we're going to make to this, is that David's going to follow up with a memo to staff with his analysis and asking questions and clarification, and you can address those in the next. When do you think you can get that to her before the next meeting?
Oh, yeah. Well, as long as the next meeting is in January fifth or something.
Sure, I appreciate that, so.
So for the November minutes, though, they need to reflect what happened at the November meeting?
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to let them sit at the way they are if you're happy to answer my questions in a memo.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
And then we'll discuss how we're going to do it going forward. Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are then approved with those changes. Do we have any other added starters for this meeting?
I wonder, hold on just a second. I have information about the Wellwood patio, but the Wellwood patio is not on our agenda, but the only thing I have is that they opened the bid. And they have a responsible, responsive person, and.
Put that on a buildings committee report.
Okay, we'll go there.
It is a building.
There you go.
It's in progress, so how about, how about putting it there?
Or Wellwood.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't you put it there?
Okay, perfect.
Anything else? Do we have any pelvic comments?
Let me check.
Treasurer's report.
Okay, so, I, you know, going back to that last discussion about, you know, treasurer's reports being submitted in advance or something like that, I think that's, that was very useful for last time because I'm sure a lot of that was pulled from, from the minutes. At least, when you have that many numbers, it's nice to be able to look at that. The only thing I have to report is the cash, and then I have some questions for Jamie. So, you know, go to that page. It has library endowment, and it shows cash of one million nine fifty-five five sixty-four twenty-one. I just want to have that for the record, but I don't know whether or not the finance department actually has been able to credit, first of all, the interest that we knew was due for this past fiscal year, and what, what else has been done with regards to the prior fiscal years that I think that was in discussion with the finance department office. And then I have a couple other questions.
I don't think that they've done anything from what we've talked about.
Okay. Does that mean that we should send them a note or?
I'll follow up with them.
Because I, I suppose it might, I don't know. Edit maybe, you know, has there ever been a time when the Board of Trustees actually sent a note to somebody in City Hall saying, "We're still awaiting something"?
Yes, actually, I, I remember doing it with the city attorney at one time, when we had the city attorney looking at the, you remember, we were talking about what was raised by the former city librarian about the, I hate to say, the authority of the Board of Trustees. We had the city attorney looking at that. And we had to kind of send a couple of notes, and I actually wrote those notes. So, yeah, we have done that.
Because especially when it concerns of prior fiscal years, that's might be worthy of a note, so maybe if we let them have a nice, happy holidays, and then maybe follow up in the new year.
Would that be to Mr. Lacy? He was here last time?
Or his direct report.
Just ask for an update on what's going on?
Yeah.
From the treasurer or from the president? Which would you prefer? I, I mean, I can do it if you'll.
Oh, oh, no, I think, I think the president's fine.
Okay.
If you want me to draft something for you, I'll draft.
Sure, I'll send it over. Be happy to.
But let's see what happens. Maybe we get a Christmas present.
Hold on. Well, it's pretty close to Christmas. I'll see if it's coming in the door, so. Okay, anything else?
Oh, um, I don't think this would be reflected in these numbers, and I don't know, maybe if it's coming in another report about the status of payments owed to consultants that were supposed to be coming from Measure J funds. Is that somewhere else in the agenda?
I have not, no, and I haven't heard back from them on that one either.
Who's them?
Measure J or the finance department.
Oh, yeah, but that request we sent over. You haven't heard from the consultants that we were looking for, Matt?
No, I think we got them paid.
Good, okay.
So City Hall wrote a check?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Okay, so is it, the Measure J funds that we would require, are they supposed to go to anything other than the consultants at this point?
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you say?
The Measure J funds, are they supposed to go to anything other than the consultants? Because if the consultants were paid, then.
No.
Not at this time. It looks like there's three thousand dollars left in what we allocated, right, to the consultants. That's strategic planning. So they have been paid.
They've been paid forty-six thousand nine hundred in this last month. Yeah.
So I think they're.
They've been paid probably all of the bills that we have, I think.
Okay, so.
But our request is for Measure J to give us, to reimburse the trust fund for that.
Oh, okay, for the forty-six thou, not the forty-six.
The ninety-nine thousand five hundred.
Ninety-nine thousand five hundred, okay. Yeah.
Anything else, David?
No, that's a, that's a.
Who has the Friends report?
Do you want me to be the Friends again?
Sure.
I'm going to be the Foundation again.
I was at, I was at the Foundation. I was the Friends. So Nancy's on vacation, so the things that, they had a book sale last weekend. Unfortunately, it wasn't as successful as previous sales because of the power outage on Friday in the park. There was a swim meet that was supposed to have taken place, and it had to be rescheduled, and so unfortunately, it was rescheduled on the same day as the book sale, which made parking a nightmare. So they did not have as many sales as they had wanted, but their sales on the shelves are doing really well, and they're super excited about that, so that has been going on. The other thing is that the Friends sent out a Giving Tuesday request via email, and they got some donations, including two one thousand dollar donations, so they were very excited about that. And they have scheduled a end-of-the-year request as well, letting people know that if they had taxed the per dollars that they wanted to take advantage of and give to the Friends, that they could, so. So those things are coming up, and then they are discussing when their annual meeting date is, but they have not said that yet. And they are excited about their progress for their modernism events. They have three of them. They have a house tour, a lecture that will be here at the library, and then also a exhibit that will be at the Wellwood in the community room every single day of modernism. And their ticket sales have been going very well. Their house tour is almost sold out. They've been getting really good sales on their daily exhibit, and the lecture is also selling really well. So they're anticipating really good results from that.
That was everything. I want to throw in that the exhibit is a modernism, a mid-century modern dinnerware exhibit. So dishes, and, yeah, they've sold a lot of tickets to that, and it's unique and inexpensive to attend, I think, is it?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars. So it's, it's right downtown. It's something people can just walk in and, and do the tour, and the person who has the dinnerware has enough for at least three years of exhibits. There's so much.
And it's a local person, right?
It's not someone on their Friends.
Friends member, yeah.
I have another question, too, about, how did the Friends feel about the Legacy project? Because I know they.
They were very happy about the response of the Legacy project. They thought the reception went well. They were super excited about all the kids coming and seeing the Legacy wall. The class visits we had, we had, I think, over ten different class visits come, some as big as ninety students, some as small as fifteen students. So it was very interactive, and so they were very pleased about that full project and those two weeks of activities, so, yeah.
I have another question about that, too, because when you have that many school kids come by, and then we were just talking about the parking issues that were going on, how, how did you coordinate that? I mean, it seems like you'd have to kind of do that, kind of, you know, look at the calendar and see where's the ball games, or when's something going on, and then say, "Okay, you've got this window of opportunity between X hour and X hour," or something like that.
Well, we, we did have to coordinate a lot, but part of the funding was to pay for busing, so obviously, it was just one bus that would bring all the kids together. It wasn't multiple cars. So we just had to accommodate the one bus, and so, and. And so, uh, and winter league doesn't start until January, February, um, and, uh, summer league wasn't a factor. So in November, actually, was a great time for us to be able to accommodate something like that. So we did have to coordinate very closely on the schedule, but, um, it seemed to work out fine.
We did do some before the library opened also.
Yes, we did.
At early morning visits.
Yeah, a couple of those.
How'd that work?
Well, because we're here early, we have...
It was great because the library's quiet, we could do our tour and be as loud as we want, saying, you know, you're right, you will see.
Yes.
Is it because the kids are, they're already at school at like seven-thirty in the morning and they just got on the bus?
And with their schedule at eight or something. Yeah, with their schedule at school, the teacher had requested earlier time because of other things going on at the school that day. Uh, twice, two different classes, so.
We even had a Saturday school visit.
Yes, that, that was a, a Gatesrate Alliance club, and they decided to meet on a Saturday and to come here.
Okay, and all those numbers get rolled into this report that we were, like, looking at in terms of?
Uh, probably, I don't know, uh, it might be reflected in door count situation, that'd probably be the only place. Because we, it wasn't us doing the outreach, we didn't go to them, they came to us. So we have, we, I have the information, I have it recorded for the different schools and how many kids, I have all of that, but it doesn't fit into that category, so would not probably show up on the report that you get in particular.
Because if this is the report that goes to the Library Association, that would kind of pump up our numbers, right?
Uh, no.
They don't ask for that, they don't ask for tour number or, like, class visits, they do ask for, or don't, yeah. So it's tricky because it, yeah, we want to, we want to count that and get credit for it, class visits and, uh, class tours. So when we go to the class, we don't count the...
We count outreach, then it's a, an activity.
You get one, one mark, but you don't say, I saw thirty kids.
So for program attendance, when it has the totals here, and you see school age. And our number for November is down twenty-four percent, just even for that, it would, you know, for, that would be a huge boost to that number.
Right, uh, but we're, we, we have to decide to be consistent, and so we don't count, um, class visits. That we'll, if they come for a program that we've organized as a program, this is a little unique because it's considered a class visit and not a program, so.
So we would probably report that anecdotally in our annual report next year, as we did this year, and we would talk about all those numbers. But it wasn't our program, and we didn't go do it, they came to us, and so we had a piece of it in that we toured, we took them on a tour, and we were able to get them a library card, and we, it's a library cards, you know, you'd see a bump there, you'd see a bump in our door count.
Yeah, you're right, but it, it's, it's something we, we do, we lose that, um, that benefit of counting.
Yeah, especially when you're devoting staff time to it.
But we, uh, we just have to be consistent in our counting. So anytime we go to Head Start or to an elementary school, it counts as one visit and not ninety children. And so it's, it's sad that we don't get the benefit of that count, but we, we know we're reaching them, but... So some things we just can't count in that way.
To compare apples to apples.
Yeah, yeah, so when we host a program, when we do a, a gaming day or a crafting, craft afternoon or something, and this holiday season, when the schools are out for three weeks, we're going to have three weeks of, of crafting programs, and we still probably won't count them exactly, but our door count will go up.
But when you have people coming into this room, the learning center, for an event, do you count, it's just one event and not a hundred people here?
So if you look, it's counted as one event and however many people attended.
So we do count the people on that one.
So that's inconsistent.
Well, we do, we don't count tours. We don't count tours as, we don't count the statistics of the people attending the tour.
When is the next book sale?
The spring?
Yes.
I do know, because he just booked it with me, hang on, I can tell you.
It is March fourteenth, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Will be their weekend book sale, they are contemplating doing a, like a one-off, but he hasn't set that yet. But their big annual book sale will be March thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Friends. Reporting for President Sidley, he asked me to review the following points. The Foundation is currently interviewing nine new board candidates, uh, which is very exciting. And I think he reported, we are, uh, we have done an analysis on the strengths of the current board to identify where we're weak, and we're identifying potential new board members to fill in those, those areas. So for example, we're looking for a financial services background person to join the board. The Foundation has engaged Buzz Factory to update their collateral materials. Uh, they are on track with, oh, I'm sorry, on track with their three-year strategic plan. They were one of the sponsors of the reception for the wall, right, I mean, they gave money, the Foundation did. They sponsored a magazine subscription contest for kids, and it won ten magazine subscriptions, this was done by a couple of our members. And so far, we've received end-of-year donations of a thousand dollars. Yeah, so, and that might go up, so, so.
I have a question. You mentioned that you were looking for a financial services background person for your board. Isn't Nancy on your board?
She is, represents the Friends as the president of the Friends. So we're, we're looking for someone that would chair the Financial Services Committee, which is... I, I'll answer your question, um, as a matter of fact, we thought of Nancy, but this person would be in a position that with the finance committee, we'll be looking at very sensitive confidential information of donors. And so we're looking for someone that has that kind of background, and Nancy pretty much said that she, with her role on the Friends, she didn't want to...
Oh, yeah, so somebody like in private banking somewhere?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we've interviewed someone who is, um, with a investment firm, who, you know, handles financial information and can look at those kinds of things. But even the, and what we have found in talking to people like that, that sometimes their firms are very strict on what they can and cannot do in terms of, you know, contributing to a board. So we're kind of making sure that we find someone who can really help us with evaluating financial investment strategies, as well as how do you handle confidential information of donors, so. That's your question? We're also looking for an attorney. Among other things.
I did find an accountant.
An accountant?
That's accountant that will volunteer to do our paper.
Wonderful, see, we're, we're building, our goal is to double in size between now and next year, so. Anything else? So it's time to appoint a nominating committee, and I've asked, um, as his swan song, final, final thing to ever do again is Harry, uh, I'm going to ask Harry to serve on what he did last year. And Craig has agreed to be the second person. So, uh, they'll have to meet between now and the time that we have our annual meeting with the Senate of Officers. So, um, we're reaching out to people to see if there's interest. Dates for 2020, we were talking about the, so Craig, you, you want to go up first, you've got some conflicts or some questions?
I made some, uh, decisions based upon our previous schedule. Uh, I'm going to not be returning to the States until, uh, January twelfth. So I was hoping we'd either have our meetings, uh, on the fourth Thursday or the third Thursday, staying pretty close to where we are now in our schedule. And, um, then in February, I'm requesting the same. We either stay on the third or fourth Thursday. And then March, we, uh, recommending we switch back to, you were saying earlier in the month?
We, the only dates available to be recorded on TV are the first Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday of the month.
And you, and you did a poll, right, and the majority?
It was, it was all over the place, uh, it wa- it was all over the place. Harry said, um, that he would prefer Tuesdays or Thursdays because Henry doesn't have class. Kathy said she would prefer Wednesdays, and David said any, any, uh, they're all, all bad in any way.
No, I just said, don't let me stand in the way of...
And then Craig, you had...
I just had those two conflicts, January, February.
But otherwise, and you said, yeah, our preference is Thursday.
And we'd still say at three-thirty?
At three o'clock.
At three o'clock, I mean, three o'clock.
Because the first, first Thursday of the month, our reasoning is because, um, the library's open Tuesdays and Wednesdays uh, until eight, and we have programs in the evenings on those nights, and so it would create, it creates a prob- problem for us. So if, if we could, we would prefer the first Thursday of the month, um, if you all would be okay with that.
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as we institute that in March.
And we can talk about the, the January, February, too.
You want me to, okay, so the third of Thursday would be the sixteenth.
Of January?
Of January, and the fourth Thursday of January would be the twenty-third. There's actually, um, five Thursdays in January, just so you know. Um, I, if you wanted to have it here, we could, um, do it on either of those days, but you might want to consider the sixteenth over the twenty-third because the winter baseball league is starting on, um, the twentieth, that's when the players report, and they will be playing from nine to five here, so there will be no parking here. So if you want to meet in this location, I would highly suggest the sixteenth, as we would not have that conflict.
Although they'll be doing practice at that time.
No, the players don't report till the twentieth.
Okay.
And then they do practice days, the twenty-first and twenty-second, and their very first day of games is the twenty-third.
Because last year they showed up early.
Well, unless they change their schedule again, I can't, I can't control their schedule.
Yeah, we could also, well, in the Wellwood would be an option too, but...
But we could do it here because the computer class changed to Fridays.
The sixteenth might be better.
Any Thursday, we would be voting teen programs, so if you didn't want to vote teens, you could do it at Wellwood.
Craig, would the sixteenth work?
Yeah, either sixteen or the twenty-third.
Many weeks away from, from today, is that?
Uh, yeah, the sixteenth is fine.
Four weeks, which is, because we're meeting a little, kind of off this month, aren't we? This isn't...
Yeah, we're one week early because of the holiday.
Right, so that gives us four weeks. Now, January will be our annual meeting, so it's important everybody be there on the sixteenth.
At three P M.
Yes.
Here.
And that would be here.
Okay, so let's get that out and make sure that everyone, can you please verify that, you know, Kathy and Harry are available? We need everyone here. I know it's, last minute things can happen, but...
Would, um, right, and, you know, less, today...
And do you want to do it here, um, teens, or do you want to do it at Wellwood?
I'd rather do it here.
It, yeah, it's easier, I just want to make sure.
Lisa, do you know if the teens had anything they don't?
That's their first, um, isn't that their first day back after the break?
Uh, let me look, because I have it written down in the, in the book.
Uh, yes, it is.
It is.
What break?
Oh, the teens don't do teen time.
Their first.
They don't do their teen time during the break.
What's the break?
Oh, their winter break from school.
It would be...
They have three weeks off from school.
Three weeks?
Oh, yeah.
Wow, things have changed since I left.
No, they also start at the beginning of August, they also start at the beginning of August.
They only get two months off in the summer, and they have a lot of breaks.
Okay, well, I'm forgiving then.
So, yeah, that would be his first one.
Okay, so that would be January, what about February?
Okay, so February.
Friends first one back.
Okay, so February, the third Thursday would be the twentieth, and the fourth Thursday would be the twenty-seventh. Um, you might want to do the third because Lisa and I would not be here on the twenty-seventh, so it would just be you by yourself, Jeannie. Up to you, though.
I thought earlier was probably better since it's going to be the first week in March, right?
Right, that's true.
Oh.
Yeah, so you probably want to line some clothes, so the twentieth?
So the twentieth is, um, Modernism Week.
It is.
The Friends have their house tour, but it only goes until two P M, it's not affecting this location.
But that's just two weeks before the next one. That, that's, that doesn't make sense to me.
Well, so, um, Craig, how long were you going to be gone in February, until when?
Uh, February, I'm, um, I could do the thirteenth, I'll be here on crutches. I'm getting, uh, another knee replaced.
Let's, let's, this is the shoot for the thirteenth.
The thirteenth is their Valentine card event.
The day before Thanksgiving, not, not...
Wellwood.
Oh. Yeah, we could go to Wellwood.
Valentine's Day is the next day.
Oh, we can't go to Wellwood.
On the thirteenth?
Yeah, because the exhibit...
But is it, is it up then, or it's just getting set up?
Oh, no, it's, it's up and running, you're right. Yeah, that's right, I wasn't looking at my own note.
We could do the twenty-seventh, I don't mind if you guys aren't there, it's up there.
But then you're going to meet the... But then you're going to meet the next week.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Just give it.
You don't want to meet on the thirteenth, then?
Oh, we could, I was just, uh, the teens are having a big Valentine's event.
Here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'd have to bump in this room.
And Modernism is at the Wellwood?
Right.
And there's nothing at City Hall, correct?
That is actually City Council on the thirteenth, they're doing the second and fourth Thursdays of the month.
They switched, yeah.
That's why, that's how we got bumped.
On Tuesday.
We have the Friends meeting on Tuesday, the eleventh. If you wanted to do the eighteenth.
When is their meeting over?
You could do the eighteenth.
Is the eighteenth, are you sure? We don't have anything here? Baseball's over?
Baseball's supposed to end on Monday, the holiday, the President's Day.
But then do they have playoffs?
Oh, Team Lego, that's right, Team Lego's the third.
Moving to Tuesdays.
Teams that, that was formerly the Tweens is now Team Lego, and that's the third Tuesday, so that's true.
We fight over these rooms.
Well, we only have the ones.
Modernism is over, so we could go to Wellwood, right, if it's available?
But you'd have to turn down that exhibit, it's...
No, it's, it's the whole time of Modernism, so it's still up on eighteen.
Oh, okay, when's Modernism over?
And the twentieth, Modernism doesn't get done till the twenty-third, which is on, uh, Sunday, and then they have a couple of days to take it down.
Do we want to meet later in February and drop March?
Okay, or just not do February?
Or skip February?
And just go straight to March?
Do January, March.
Unless we have an urgent item, I don't know what urgent item we might have.
Go back to, go back to January, then if we were going to skip February, we could, we could go to the end of March, the last, what happens the last week of March.
Of January?
I'm sorry, January, excuse me, am I saying March, I mean January, did you know what I mean?
I'm on vacation.
Vacation, did you just have a vacation?
She's going today.
Well, and baseball will be here, baseball will be here on the twenty-third and the thirtieth. Baseball is for, like, four, six weeks, so baseball is here on the twenty-third and the thirtieth. Which is, I mean, it's up to you, but it's like a horrible time to park.
I can't do the thirtieth at all, I won't be here.
You could try the twenty-third, I just can't, I just, as long as you know that you may not be able to park here.
I would be here.
Could we do Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
Of January?
And then we wouldn't meet again until the first of March, so February's, February's such a short month. Are you available then?
No, she has a line generally.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, Phil is on fourteen.
How's the twenty-eighth?
Um, at what time, three?
I guess. January twenty-twenty.
Yes.
That works?
January twenty-eighth is wide open here.
Let's, let's, that makes sense to me that, that's, what's today?
So you do January twenty-eighth, and then you skip February and then do the first week of March, is that right?
We're back on schedule, unless we have something urgent to meet on during February, but at least that gives us February to...
February.
It does, that's not that many weeks. Is that okay?
So Tuesday, the twenty-eighth it is.
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth?
At three P M here.
Is our next meeting, it's, it'll be our annual meeting? And then we'll meet again officially on the first Thursday of March, right?
Yep, and then we'll go to the first Thursday of the month at three o'clock at City Hall.
And that starts on... And that starts on March.
And then, and that.
It'll be April third.
So March, March fifth.
March fifth, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, April second.
March fifth, April second.
April seven, I mean, um, May seventh, June fourth.
That'll be great for us, because we won't have the summer meeting conflict.
We just wanna have steps.
July second, that might be kinda iffy, because it's close to the fourth, but.
April second, I won't be here.
Okay.
Okay.
We're just gonna get back in the Selena thing, so.
Okay, so any meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth.
Okay, so are we set?
I think that sounds great.
Yeah, that's good.
Done.
Yeah, it's nice.
Moving right along, do we have a report from the advocacy committee?
No.
Do we have a report from the budget committee?
No.
Now, um, I should stop right there, because the budget committee, we should meet in January already to start thinking of the next year.
Oh, my gosh. But you pull that grid together, right?
Well, I guess we should, yeah, we should meet in February, because you won't know who the budget, all of the elections and all the things in January, we'll do that, and then.
But there won't be a meeting in February.
But then the budget committee.
Budget committee.
Oh, yeah.
And, and then we all, yeah.
Does March give you enough time to do things? Cause it.
I think that, right.
The budget committee says.
I hope so. Last year it was okay, well, we did a two-year budget with the city, so we've, in theory, we're not supposed to go back for budgeting this year. But you all wanna talk about your trust on budget and what you think about.
Unless there's something with the building. Right?
I think we're gonna have to move to April meeting now that I'm thinking about it at some point, because if, per Kathy's, uh, motion last month, that we're gonna have a discussion about the, um.
And you can't be there.
And I can't be there.
We can move that.
I think we should try to do, talk about that when the rest of the teens here.
The next week.
What do you think? I think let's just get through, get to the January.
Are the annual meeting? Could you do it the annual meeting, do get them tops, is this the end of January?
To do what?
To bring this agenda item.
Out budget committee meeting?
No, she had asked for the, uh, didn't she ask to talk about the foundation?
When the foundation does the annual report to add about how they're gonna, about the note.
So do you wanna talk about the note at that time?
At what time?
You wanna talk about, well, Kathy was asking during the A- April meeting, when the, when the foundation brings their annual report, to have a discussion about the promissory note.
Okay.
And you, do you wanna talk about that? You were asking about Kathy's request, but her request was about the April meeting.
Because that's when we traditionally bring the annual report from the foundation, is in April. Um, we can move it up to March, to the annual report in March, I mean, the foundation could do it then instead. Do it much early.
Yeah, that's up, that's okay, whatever you all want.
And then, yeah, maybe you should.
So we want me to make a motion that we amend the discussion about the, um, the outstanding note to April, I mean, to March from April?
Yeah. So do I have a, have a, we have a motion to move the report to March? Right?
Right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Alright, so we'll move it to the March meeting discussion. And we'll ask the foundation to prepare their report for that meeting, right? Which I don't think could be a problem.
Okay.
The budget committee will meet in February, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that to you to schedule that, right? So, cause you'll know by that time after the, um, annual meeting, who's on that committee. Remember, remember whoever is president has to bring their committee assignments and be prepared to do it at the annual meeting, we made that change. Remember? Uh, any report from the buildings committee, we're gonna talk about Wellwood at Wellwood, right? So I guess my question for you is, have you heard anything from, speaking of nudge, anything from your boss about the organization around what's next for the?
No, and I just seated the new council, and I think that's.
That was priority, okay.
So, um, I think that in, hopefully, maybe in January.
So would it be appropriate?
So, so to clarify what we're talking about, we're talking about the, the renovation or, uh, whatever with the library.
Yeah, the building committee's recommendation that we stay here.
And I wasn't trying to be snarky, I was just saying that that day, I was there until ten thirty when they closed the doors. So they had a lot of discussion about that agenda item.
Uh-huh.
And when it was on the agenda at first, by the way, this, not to have a private conversation with Jeannie in front of everybody, but, uh, yeah, but the day that we presented the report, the committee report to council, it was on the agenda, and then it was asked to be taken off of the consent and for discussion, and, or was it maybe some?
Yeah, that's right.
And, so then what happened was, it was put to the end, we were, we were almost, yes, we were almost the last thing, and we were there until ten thirty freezing to death, I remember. Uh, so there was a lot of discussion about it, and where we left that, and by the way, I'll follow up with Dr. Ready, was that council asked Dr. Ready to take the next steps to form yet another, uh, committee to start looking at programming and the next steps for the building. And that's been silent because of the city council change. So I'll nudge him and copy you.
Also, I do believe, and this, this might have been just a Desert Sun report, but I think Lisa Middleton was quoted as saying that, uh, perhaps, um, the discussion about programming would be redirected to the board of trustees.
It, it, you're right, um, so the, the conversation was that Dr. Ready was to make a formal charge to us about what he's looking for, or what the city would be looking for around programming and naming another committee. And, um, at the same time, the city process behind our, you know, our architects' feasibility studies would kick in as well. So we would be responsible for that, but the city would be responsible for that.
But I thought the cost, the cost issue that, uh, Dr. Ready's supposed to be working on is, uh, is inclusive not only of, um, what renovations could be made to this building, but also any other alternatives, including a new building elsewhere. Because I think that in part of that discussion, I, I think in part of that discussion, um, there was, um, feeling that, um.
But let me edit your last comment to say new building, but not elsewhere at this point. Because it was discussed by the members that night, that if we were to build an addition or an annex to this building, it would fall under new building. That would be the new building part in this site.
Right.
Plus renovation, so they said, interesting enough, that we may find ourselves experiencing a renovation and a new building all in one project.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Uh, so I think, let me, let me nudge him and ask what, as the former chair. Now, they did say in their conversation that they wanted the president of the trustees to still serve in some capacity on this committee, and it looked at me, and I said, well, I may not be the president, so I mean, whoever is that assignment. So I'll ask Dr. Ready as the, it's, it's probably something we should discuss at our annual meeting, to be honest, you know, what's the next steps for us especially? See what he says. Have you had any conversation with him about it?
Just, um, just where are we, and that was it.
There's, there's too much going on at City Council, I mean.
Right, they're just trying to get the new council.
They haven't even made the subcommittee enough.
No, they have not assigned this, the library subcommittee either.
Have they talked anymore about redoing the whole park involving Boys and Girls Club?
They haven't talked about any, any of this.
The good news is, the people that are on there, I've, I've talked with every one of them to some extent about the project, so. Even Grace and I had a very long conversation, we had two conversations, cause she's my representative when we were here for the wall. Um, and then she and I had another conversation at a fundraiser for her, so. You know, I think they're all up to speed and know the importance, plus her mother's been talking to her, of course, cause she was on the committee, so. That does, okay? The policies are bylaws, right?
Do we, um, Julie, when should we do the policies? It's time to check them and make sure if they have any tweaks.
Do you wanna do that after the annual meeting?
Definitely.
I mean, it's, it's just more of if there's any.
We did.
Yes, there are changes that we may direct, right?
Yeah, and we like to do our, uh, library policies just once a year, so that we don't bombard you with tiny things. We just like to try to do it all at once, once a year, and I know the teen zone, they were talking about, there are a couple, like, the food policy here, and, uh, stuff like that, so at some point, we do need to bring you some policies, but I don't know, we haven't talked amongst ourselves about when we wanna do that. And then, uh, we do new printings every year, and, and our fees will change, and so maybe.
Right, that's when I do it usually, so that it comes out for July first.
So sometime in the spring, we should, uh, bring you our policies, but I think the bylaws, you guys are okay with your bylaws?
I don't anticipate any bylaw changes unless something comes up in the annual meeting as a result of some of the discussions we've already talked about, like. I mean, I could, it, it potentially, I guess, if we start talking about the way we, we do things, it may touch into bylaws, but I don't, I don't know. Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, literacy report?
Yeah, we're, we're, they're talking about the passport policy, we're gonna have to add policies to our policy manual about passports and all of that, so.
Sometimes soon, maybe, maybe that February meeting, I'm just kidding.
No, no, no.
Maybe in March.
Find something for it.
Maybe in March, we'll.
Yeah. Strategic, uh, I'm sorry, literacy? And then report, strategic planning?
I have a question on regarding that.
Yes, sir.
Um, so we still have this, uh, pot of money from Measure J that's supposed to be going towards strategic planning. So, um, I think it would be wise in part of our budget process, because I know it's not something that, um, Jeannie needs to submit to City Hall, but I think in the budget discussion, uh, just amongst ourselves, we should be thinking about projects that utilize strategic planning money, um, because it's fair, let's use it.
And as we, we've learned, it's really for us to dictate how it's used, Measure J, they would said, here's your, here's the money, you guys identify the projects, so.
I mean, even if it's for things that seem like we've been talking about as a library for a thousand years, like the toilets or something like that, I mean, if that needs to be revisited, let's, you know, spend some money.
Shouldn't, the report from the strategic planning, it's so, what we just talked about, right? What's going on at Wellwood?
Okay, so the, um, the bids were submitted, and, um, the, they did calculate the bids, um, this hasn't gone to City Council yet for award, so, um, they have, uh, found the lowest responsive bidder, and they are then going to, uh, I guess it's engineering, they're, they're going to write the staff report to take, to City Council to award the bid. So, um, we have that. Now, there are two, two features that were alternate bid items, and, um, I'm not sure who really decides this, because who decides which way to go? Do we go with, um, the plan? Uh, do we, who requests it, do we add on the add-ons? Uh, who gets to decide that, I'm assuming it's City Council that gets to decide that. So, um, the, um, the price that came in right now, I think is two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars um, for the project, and then to enclose the air conditioner area, that's an additional nineteen thousand dollars. And then to upgrade the doors, the gates, uh, with wood, uh, alternative, um, with a wood instead of just plain steel, um, a total twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for, for that alternative on the doors. So I, I suspect it's going to be the lowest.
They've got our money, right?
Yes.
So they don't, they got, that comes off?
And that's what I've reported to, uh, to them, is that the trustees approved a fixed amount, and they, they all know that that's it.
So I guess the balance at this point is going to be the city's money. Maybe the city's gonna decide they're gonna do those add-ons?
Yeah, yeah, so.
I would imagine they would. Now, but I guess, who put those add-ons on the list? Do you remember?
Engineering, um, they asked for it to be a bid with the, the more inexpensive way, and then if there were alternatives, how much would you charge for, to enclose the A C unit versus just keeping it fenced? Um, it says enclosure in lieu of bid item nine, picket style fence, keep the chain link fenced up and support. So, instead of that, it would be, um, full concrete block. Um, so I'm not sure, I mean, it's just engineering, the way they develop the bid process.
I bet they would be the ones who made that call.
Yeah, and they.
Pretty much it's their money.
They asked me what my opinion was, and I'm like, well, I, what am I gonna say, I mean, what?
We want it as nice as it can be, if they can afford it, upgrade it.
Right, yeah, so I don't know if, um, if that's something.
To be honest, that's.
You all make up.
The preference is to have the upgrades if we, if it can be.
Absolutely.
Right.
I will say, I'm surprised at that bid, because I really thought it would be more than that based on the changes that came out of the last few reiterations. Since they've got a big chunk of it already pretty much taken care of, I would hope that maybe they might say, well, our portion is not as great as we thought it would be, so let's just do it the right way and include those upgrades.
I don't know if you guys want this, I don't know if this is for, I don't know if this is for public consumption, so.
I'd keep it.
But, um, that, I don't know if you want the, the cost difference, or?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just saying that if that's the lowest bid.
Do you all wanna, um, do any sort of motion of recommendation, or where you would recommend the, the higher upgrades? Or, I don't know if you have a say, honest, you know, if, I don't know if, if you all making a motion to, uh, to go with the add-ons, to request the city include those?
One side of me says, sure, why not? The other one says, I don't want them to turn around and look, okay, we'll pay for it.
Right.
You know?
Right.
Um, so I think that we need to be careful about how we, we move on this.
I told, I told them that, of course, we would want, and one, one person, I said, well, I suspect we should just go with the base and just finish the project, and then another person, I said, well, after I thought about it, I said, maybe we should go with the nicer finishes.
Cause you'll never be able to go back and revisit it.
Never again.
Because I'm afraid I don't want our community to, to say, well, is it done, or why did you cheat out?
I don't think they would know, to be honest. However, you know, let's, let's, let's pray that our great grandchildren are the ones that deal with this project ever again, right? It's not us, we're long gone to glory. So this is gonna last a long time, why wouldn't they want to do the, the upgrades if it's within their budget to do it, I guess?
Especially the A C enclosure, if we wanna have programming out there, just to leave it like it is, it's not very appealing.
Well, there is enclosure included, the A C enclosure, it connects the planter wall.
Not a soundproof.
Um, it's, uh.
Isn't it just?
I think it's one concrete wall and then fencing around the rest.
Yeah, it's one concrete wall.
You have one concrete all around, yeah.
Exactly.
I, I think I would, this is my opinion, please, two of you disagree, but I mean, had been, if you had said to me that this was one of the community groups, or this was, you know, someone else who asked for these to be bid out, I would say, yeah, let's vote to try to get them in, but since engineering asked for it, I think that's a strong possibility they'll do it, because they probably have an engineering reason to do it, correct? Probably for the soundproof?
Well, I think that, um, we did the sound, well, I know, we did the sound check on the A C units, and they weren't that loud. And Craig, you and I. And Craig, you went out there, you too, and they weren't really super loud. So, the economical decision was just to put the concrete wall on the one wall that would face the courtyard, and then have chain link fencing facing away from the building, so that you wouldn't see those three sides.
But engineering will be talking with the City Council, right?
And, well, and I think also the preference, the preference was to keep it open on those sides for airflow.
You may have to, because the units...
So, there were some arguments to say, "We want to keep it open for the airflow, and how much would it cost more if we did do it the other way?" And then the doors, we, nobody could really come up with a design. And so, we just went with a basic steel design that's in the plan. But then, some people had suggested wood, and there wasn't a consensus over whether we wanted all steel or wood with a steel frame. And so, they asked for the price difference between the two. And that's why we're getting these two, is because those were kind of the two things nobody could really decide on.
Right. I mean, I would say, if you're asked, you should say that you brought it to the board. And because the board's money is paying for the bulk of it, we would love to see the city do the upgrades. But we definitely need a motion on that, unless they come back and... I've heard they'll say, "Well, okay, if you want the upgrades, pay for it."
Yeah. And do you all, Craig and David, do you have the same opinion as Ed on this?
Yeah.
I'm just, so, just to restate the question. So, you've been presented with a different cost structure than was already approved?
No, there was nothing approved. The Library Board of Trustees voted to approve $150,000, and some of that had been spent. There was a little... Well, now, there's 147. And then, we had a meeting some months ago. It's been a long time. And the city said, "We will just pick up the rest."
Correct.
And then, everybody said, "Well, great, let's get this done." And then, this was just, there was an engineering's estimate of what they thought it would cost, and these were the true bids that came in. So, there was no real budget. The city doesn't really even have a budget for this project.
So, the only thing...
But it's not Measure J, we did learn that.
So, I think there's something for us to discuss if the city turns down what the engineers are presenting to them. But only then...
I don't think they will.
I don't think they will either.
So, I don't think there's really anything for us to vote on at this point.
Okay.
And I think before, and also the other groups who think it's a great idea to do the upgrades would be right behind us in line, saying, considering that it's... How much is the bid? Sorry?
$265,000, and then the up charges were about $45,000. So, we're talking about $310,000.
And they have half of it covered from the trust fund.
Uh-huh.
That's not a bad deal to do it right and have it done. I can't imagine that they would say no to it. I mean, they could, but...
Yeah, it would be great to get it done.
Get well at this lifetime.
Wellwood's coming up on its five-year anniversary, and we haven't had the patio done.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I saw Ron the other night talking about it. Okay. Is that it?
Yeah.
How about staff reports?
Okay. I'm ready to stand. So, we, the library will be closed on December 24th and 25th, next week, for holidays. And we are closing early on New Year's Eve. We're closing at 6:00 PM, both here and at Wellwood. The Wellwood will be open on Christmas Eve, but closing at 6:00 PM. We did participate in the Festival Lights Parade. It was a really wonderful time. Yay! We had a great time.
Did you guys hear that?
Yes.
She looked right at me, I was waving at her when she saw me.
It's hard to see.
It's so hard to see.
I know it is.
It was a really great thing. Every time they started making announcements, they were talking about the library. And so, that's why we do this. We want to get the word out about the library and make it happy. They talked all about being fine-free at every station, and that was really cute. We had our annual Santa event. Our Santa and Mrs. Claus came to the library. It was a wonderful program with large attendance. We do that every year, and it's a great program because it's free. And a lot of families can't afford to go to the mall and get their, pay for a photo package. And so, it's a wonderful program. Let's see. We have some really wonderful programs coming in the new year. And Julie, you can highlight some of those, but I want to talk about Palm Springs Speaks real quickly. We have Joan Collins coming at the end of January. January 26th, Sunday afternoon, an afternoon with Joan Collins. And the VIP starts at 2:00, the event starts at 3:30. Michael Childers is going to introduce her. We've added two new programs. So, Andrea Bernstein is coming to the Camelot on January 31st at 7:00 PM. Her book is called American Oligarchs, The Kushners, The Trumps, and The Marriage of Money and Power. Her last name might be familiar, because she's Jeffrey Bernstein's sister, who Jeffrey Bernstein owns Destination PSB. But she is really... Pulitzer... She won a Peabody Award, that's what she won. She's an award-winning investigative journalist and has been on a lot of great programs. Our other bonus event is actor and advocate Tembi Locke. She's coming on February 5th at noon at the Camelot. It's gonna be, have a box lunch option. So, we're doing a lunch and learn kind of an event. You can come in and get a box lunch. Now, she is the author of the book called From Scratch, A Memoir of Love, Sicily, and Finding Home. It's a Reese Witherspoon Book Club pick, and they are doing a Netflix limited series featuring the actor... Oh, what's her name? I can picture her. I'll get back to you.
Sounds like...
Zoe Saldano.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Yes. And her husband was an Italian chef, and he got cancer. And it's kind of her being a caregiver and grieving and healing with his family. His family wasn't really accepting of her. It was an interracial marriage. And so, her spending three summers in Sicily with his family and learning to become a family. And so, it's gonna be a wonderful program.
Are you guys doing the box lunch?
The Camelot. The chefs at the Camelot are doing the box lunch. It's gonna be an Italian-themed box lunch because of...
That's gonna be in February?
Yeah, February 5th. And the ticket options, Andrea Bernstein's $10. Tembi Locke is $20. Hers includes a book. For $35 for the book, the lecture, the book, and the box lunch. So, wonderful fundraiser event. Tembi Locke, the publisher, is helping us bring her here. So, the publisher is the same one that brought Nick Offerman and Megan Malali. So, we're working with them again for that program. And then Bob Woodward is coming on March 6th at 7:00. And he, his tickets are really selling, so if you don't have tickets, you need to get them. And Joan Collins, too, of course. Tickets are really selling, too. And that is... Oh, so, Julie, can you please tell us about some highlights and programs in January?
Sure. So, January's always about, you know, new year, new you. And so, we have several different speakers that are coming. At the Wellwood, we're gonna have a program on January 14th about using essential oils in your household to make it for a healthier home. We have a TEDx and author speaker coming on January 22nd about challenging your assumptions and changing your world. And then, we're partnering with the wellness, for our wellness lecture, with the Certified Farmer's Market of Palm Springs Cultural Center on January 29th, to bring in a lecture about the psychology of food choice and how your hormones and things like that interact with food and how you can manage those choices. So, all about kind of, you know, looking at all areas of your life. And we also have a health lecture with Eisenhower Health about the opioid issue and how to use them responsibly, and what you should know in talking with your doctor, and when it becomes a problem, and so on. So, all sorts of different aspects in January. I will point out that in February, right at the end of February, there is a whole page devoted to discuss the Friends, three different programs that will be in Modernism, if you want more information about any of those. And then, of course, you know, we have great speakers coming in February, too, so...
So, the one that's at the Wellwood, is that in this book, too?
It is not. Wellwood has its own schedule. It looks like this.
Oh, okay.
It says, "Wellwood Programs." It's, we have programming during season at the Wellwood once a month. And those are for, you know, to be picked up here in the library or at Wellwood or throughout the community. And I do have some here in this room that I go back. And you can definitely pick that up.
What does it say about parking for the Wellwood?
There is no dedicated parking. It's just street parking, but that's why we actually have our programs at the Wellwood at 10:30 in the morning, because they don't start monitoring street parking downtown till noon. So, you can park on the street.
But it does say that on a brochure, "Street Parking."
Oh, no, yeah, it says, "Street Parking," yeah. Like, no parking, yeah. Thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Any trustee comments?
Yes, two, the freight building, that's going through a remodel. They did a short presentation, I thought, at one time in one of our meetings.
They haven't started anything on that one. But I know that it's on the list. I'm trying to think if they were giving a cost estimate. I think they did award... Did they like the staff report to the City Council? To engage someone to work on it?
To do plans?
Yeah. So...
So, it could go up to...
It's on the list. Yeah, we're eager to see what happens.
There's a need there.
Yes.
The other question I had was the committee assignments. There's a number of committees here. I'm assuming the trustees fill those positions.
Yes, so what happens at the, when the nominating committee identifies the slate of officers, the incoming president is required to come to the first meeting with committee assignments. So, when you guys identify who that person will be, they'll start working on committee assignments, and they'll approach every one of the committees and say, "I've identified the following people. They've all agreed to serve on those committees." So, it's done that one.
I just want to make sure.
We've done that last year, though.
Yeah, we've done that. I did that. I identified the committee, if you remember, because you...
I was, you know, I was like, and I remember it was just a matter of like, who wants to do what? And we all raised our hands when we were doing it.
Right, there weren't that many options. Because once you identify the officers, you know, some of those committees go with those officers, right? But a couple of years ago, we, as a body, decided, we used to have, what would happen is, we'd have the annual meeting, and we'd know who the president is. And then, actually, the bylaws would say the president has had two months to identify committee assignments. And what we would find is that by that time, we were already three months into the year, and committees hadn't organized or hadn't met. So, we said, "Let's change this," so that the, we're not that large. When the president is informed at the meeting, they'll announce that the committees aren't halfway there. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
And so, I just wanted to add, on the nominating committee, you are nominating the president and the treasurer, correct? And then, the president appoints the pro temp?
Correct, and the committee appoints.
And then, the committee. And then, I know in previous years, when it's been tough, you've done some vital ones and waited until later to do others.
Oh, you made it.
Last, in January last year, you, because we were short one person, I think?
We were, because Craig was involved.
Yeah, then you didn't appoint anybody on literacy, and you only appointed like one person for a few different things. But the standing committees were advocacy, budget, buildings, and policies. And then, ad hoc were so on and so forth. But so, there have been, and even...
Oh, what did you say?
Even before then, like, when Ron Wilson was president one year, he was like, "Well, I can't possibly appoint anybody. I just got voted president, and I haven't had the chance to think about it."
You remember, we decided that should there not, should there be no need for a committee for that year? There's no reason the president has to name a committee. And I believe that's what we decided, is that that one was not needed, because there was nothing going on. So, why assign a group to do nothing, right? So, you know, this coming year, the president may say, "We have no need for this committee." Because it always be named, but why go, why start that way? Yeah, I remember that. The bylaws were changed to allow that, right? Because that was on the bylaw committee day.
Yeah, for sure.
I always get stuck on the bylaw committee for some reason.
Are there library employees on these subcommittees?
The only thing I would ask that I am on them, and the budget especially.
You kind of direct the budget.
But I'm not one of your two committee members. I'm just, I'm there as your helper.
Keep over the files.
Ex officio.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Another question? All right, so, I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday, and whatever celebration you might personally have. And it's been a great year. We've accomplished a lot this year. When we think about it, we have gotten a lot done, and I think next year's gonna be even busier. So, have a great holiday, and thank you all, thank staff, for all that you do for us. We appreciate it. And let's adjourn this meeting at 4:28, it looks like. Thank you for the cameras.